Good evening. We're going to start tonight off with a prayer and pledge for those who would like to participate, please do so. And we're going to call on Councilwoman Sylvia to lead the prayer.
Lord, if you'd bow your heads if you so desire. Lord, we thank you today for this gathering of city councils, city leaders, citizens of the city of Saginaw. Lord, we asking that you would take over and step in and help us make correct decisions. Lord, we asking for peace. We bind up confusion right now in the name of Jesus. Lord, and we be so careful to give your name the praise. All the honor and glory is yours. In Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to this public meeting. The audience is asked to remain silent, boo, no hand clapping, none of that going on. This is a single-subject meeting. All of my city council persons, please silence your phones. Audience, if you could do so too, I truly would appreciate it.
Would you like to unscript each other?
Which one? The audience welcome?
The white one.
Oh, too many, too much, too much. The reason for this single-subject meeting is for the purpose of discussion relating to the expenditures of the American Relief Plan Act Fund for Housing and Blight. This is a single-subject topic, and if you're speaking, you have to speak about the subject that's on the table. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Present.
Councilmember Williams is excused. Councilmember Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Scherzer?
Present.
Councilmember Ostash?
Present.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Copeland is absent. Mayor Protem Balls?
Present.
And Mayor Moore?
Present.
You have seven present and two absent.
Do we have any announcements?
We do now. We are at couple of ten.
I'd like to welcome all who've signed up to address the council tonight. Please speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you're saying. You will be called to the podium by the clerk. The speaker will have three minutes' limit, which is tied by the clerk, so be sure to cover all of your main points. During this special, single-subject meeting, remarks must be limited to the single-subject of the meeting. Reminding everyone, I need everyone to be respectful and courteous because of those that are watching on HGTV and to those, and so that the counselor, the council, I'm sorry, can give serious consideration for what you are saying. Madam Clerk.
Our first speaker is Kimberly Austin.
First, I'd like to say hello to Mayor Brenda. I'm so proud of you and thank you for the wonderful job that you're doing in our city. When I looked up blight, it said anything that spoils or damages our city fabric or anything like that. So if I'm not along the right lines, you just let me know, okay, Brenda? Okay, okay. I am Kimberly Austin, a blessed beyond measures consulting agency in Blood Wash Ministries. I'm a retired teacher and a social worker whom have resided in Saginaw County for over 52 years. I have worked 28 years in Saginaw County, out county and in county, assisting and advocating for families and children. I love my city, but I don't feel safe. Therefore, I would like to see more funds go to the Saginaw County Police Department. True blight that spoils and damages our...
I'm talking about offices right now. We're sticking to blight.
That's why I ask you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, excuse me. That's why I ask you. When you say blight, are you talking about anything that's...
Blight, we're talking about the fixtures, we're talking about how the neighborhoods look, houses that need to be torn down.
Oh, yeah, okay.
That, when we talk about police, we're talking, when we're saying...
No, I'm not talking about housing that need to be torn down. I'm talking about housing that is unsafe. That's what I'm talking about. I'm not, I'm not...
Okay, okay.
Keep going, yes, no.
Okay, keep going with houses unsafe.
Yeah, because I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel safe. That's what I said.
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking about. I don't feel safe with the things that's going on in the community.
Then this your three minutes is gone, sweetie.
Therefore, I'm just going to rush it real quick. I had wrote down some ideas that I thought that you could use to help allocate funds to help in the community, but I don't know if that's something that should be discussed here and at that time, because there is an evil blight that has a rise in our city that's making me feel unsafe in my home, and I consider that to be a blight, but I'm not for sure if this is the correct meeting for that. Yes, it is?
Madam Attorney.
Yes, no, 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 yes, go sit down.
This meeting has to do with housing and blight elimination and blight in terms of, as the mayor noted, houses that should be torn down, waste in yards, things like that.
No, no, this is not the correct meeting. I apologize for taking up the time, because this is not the correct meeting. The blight that I was speaking of is an evil that has rose in the city that need to be torn down. So I'll get the correct information and I'll come back at a later time, okay? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alex Mixter.
Good evening. So this is a topic that I hold very near and dear to my heart, and in fact, just before I left to come here, I actually went on a walk around my neighborhood. I live in the Cathedral District just outside of downtown, and the concept of what we do about blight is a topic that has been of much debate over the years. And when I walked through my neighborhood, one of the things that I saw, or many of the things that I saw, we've seen large commercial buildings that have huge parapet walls that fall into the street. We've got whole buildings that have holes in the side of them. We have lots of buildings that are collapsing too. But the thing about all of this is that none of it is a deal breaker. None of those things mean that these buildings need to come down. In fact, one of the things that's been proven over the years, really, we operate off of broken window theory, and that theory has been ultimately debunked, that the crime is not related to that. But one of the things that they saw when they researched into broken window theory is that it affects the mental health of the people who live around the blight. And one of the things that people often point to as well is that you can remove the building and you remove the problem, but what you're doing is removing the opportunity. You're removing the opportunity for people to live in the city. You're removing the opportunity for people to start small businesses. We have small buildings around 3,800 square feet on Genesee that can hold three small businesses. It could have three apartments upstairs, and there's a lot of impact for what we have right now. And though they may be disadvantaged, one of the things I like to remind people is the cost of new construction today. It's about $350 a square foot. So if you have an 8,000-square-foot building, you're looking at over $3 million of a new construction that we could get at a discount, because right now, we just have to make repairs to something that's already there. And really, I know preservationists kind of get a little bit of a rap about trying to hang on to everything, but there's a quote that I love, which is, "It's not good because it's old, it's old because it's good." The amount of neglect and abuse that these structures have taken is really unbelievable, but what they've been able to endure and what we're able to see is still there, is worth investing into. We had a blighted house on Washington that I took control of, and we have made it much less of an eyesore, and we learned a lot of lessons in there for how this can apply to the housing and what we have right now. We have a housing shortage, yet we have a vacancy crisis, and we have a whole population experiencing homelessness. So how is this something that we have as a paradox when we have so much opportunity with the amount of properties we have that are in public ownership? So I just want to say thank you to the council and also to all the city staff and the city manager. This is a historic moment for Saginaw, and there's an opportunity to right the kind of wrong that only neglect can do, and I don't want to lose the future of the city because of the neglect of the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk. Our next speaker is John Millen.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the audience. John Millen, 508 West Remington. I've spoken a number of times on this subject while both on and off the council, and I'm just going to look at a couple of broad themes today. I think the ARPA Committee has done some very good work in pointing out things like the average age of housing in this city. And what I find is that it's a problem that is related to other problems, mostly the loss of population in the city. We are still in a historic downtrend on our population, and that means every time a property becomes vacant, it joins an excess of property for residential. I'm going to focus on residential here, because residential property enters into more individual decisions. And the city, while looking at the problem on the larger context, has to understand that our response to housing and blight is actually made up of thousands of individual decisions. Property owners, property runners, all look at this from their viewpoint and decide, often on an economic basis, what is the best thing for me to do. So this involves, these decisions are about improvement, neglect, repair, and abandonment. And unless we have an external source that boosts the population of the city, and we're doing as much as can be done with our individual and collective responses, the problem will be ongoing. And so I would like the council to be looking at this as, how does our decisions involving ARPA money and housing and blight removal, how does that go forward past the end of the use of the ARPA money? If I thought it made sense, I'd suggest that we have our own department to physically be addressing this, but we have employment problems already with city employees, so I'm not going to make that a serious suggestion. But the ongoing nature of it, I think, yes, you must look at that and say, how do we incentivize those individual decisions? Sometimes it's a monetary incentive, sometimes it is how to gather the community behind the same idea to incentivize it. Other speakers have spoken about that. But I really do think we've been attacking this problem a lot with, I'll use the term, other people's money. We've had external boosts to our ability to address the problem. We haven't found the right mix of incentives and spending to address it over a long term. So I hope this may provide that opportunity.
Our final speaker is Eric Eggleston.
Good evening, everyone, to the previous speakers, residents of the city of Saginaw, staff, and this esteemed city council. I won't be before you very long. My name is Eric Eggleston. I am a resident of the city of Saginaw, 1913 Amherst. I'm also the CEO, founder of Youth Development Corporation, a nonprofit operating downtown Saginaw. My points for this evening is about residential housing as well as blight, as well as being able to come back, both of those, but doing it different. YDC is in a position where we look forward to being able to compete with the traditional organizations that have been funded to build housing. But what YDC is focusing on is building affordable, sustainable, durable housing, which will entail where you can have solar, which will lower your utilities. Also, those homes would be smart home using vivid technology. Also, safe homes, because you have indoor cameras as well as outdoor cameras to be able to capture anything, everything that we build. We're looking at building communities, not one-offs. YDC has secured over 42 residential lots in the city of Saginaw that we maintain so we can make sure that we do not have blighted areas. When you combine all those things together, we are going to be bringing back to the city of Saginaw those who have left the city, because we are addressing the shortage of the housing market. And when I say that, by providing them with something new, sustainable, durable, but also homes of the future, it will put us in a position where we can compete and we can go after those individuals to bring them back here in the city. And again, attacking that blight piece is being able to maintain the residential lots that we have as we secure more lots. I think the city is in a great position to do something that is better amazing, where we can be a showcase of how we take in our youth in this city, building something brand-new, attacking blight, attacking the housing shortage, as well as securing the future of our youth. And at your next meeting, you're going to hear from some of the youth that we're bringing to the table to address those things. So again, to all of you, we appreciate your time. You have some decisions that you're going to have to make. YDC will live with those decisions, but we will compete for that funding to be able to showcase what we do. And anyone, feel free to take a drive over on 14th and Burt area and see young folks at work doing something better than amazing. Thank you for your time.
Madam Clerk. Mayor, we are now at remarks of council.
Question, we will start with Councilwoman Bench. You have three minutes. All councilpeople, you have a total of three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to all of our speakers here tonight. I agree with probably everything everyone has said here tonight. Mr. Millen, I wish it were more than a suggestion, because I do believe we need to have mechanisms here in place within the city of Saginaw to address these issues. And it's part of the reason why I've worked as hard as I have with people like Mr. Mixter and the land bank manager to try to facilitate a relationship or a more of a smooth-running process between these vacant properties that we have. But I'm looking forward to the possibility and the potential of the things that we can do as a group with these dollars, and I think I'll save any other comment for later on during that part of the discussion, but thank you all for being here tonight.
We have Councilwoman Scherzer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too thank everyone for being here for this single-subject special meeting. We definitely appreciate your input, and I'm ready to make some tough decisions that build a better and brighter Saginaw. So it's been a long time coming, and I'm glad tonight's the night, so I'll save the rest of my comments for city council meeting.
Next, we have Councilman Ostash.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. We pretty much have a full chamber again. Alex Mixter, you and I met over preservation and blight. It was a topic that we first started talking about when I met you years ago when you moved back into the city. And I kind of touched on some of the things that you brought up, some of the things that John brought up as well. And also, Eric, thank you for coming. I think blight and decisions and remediation is not just a single topic or a single solution to the problem. Preservation is a definite example of what you can do, and I did not know that price per square foot was that high. I thought it was around $2,250 with inflation, so thank you for that update. I'll kind of look into that later. But also having, what we're talking about is something that has a price point that we can get people into, and I'm looking forward to with this money is to coming up with ideas and a solution, and I'm actually looking forward to it, where we can do something, where we can actually, like the city of Detroit, working with their land bank, where maybe we can put so much into a house, and that house is sold for that cost. That helps a person get into that home at a price that's way under than maybe what they could afford it before, okay? And it puts, and so that's exactly what Eric is trying to do. I know you're in the audience somewhere. Thank you for the tour of your facility, because what you're doing over at YDC Youth Development Corporation is amazing. That's just another example of putting homes into a new house that also has a good price point, that's affordable, and Eric's working on some programs to try to get people into that house and into those price points. So I want to thank everything that everybody is doing, these ideas that you're bringing forth to the table. I always believe, like the mayor has said before, it takes all nine of us up here working on this together, but most importantly, working with the community and hearing your ideas when you bring them forth. So I'm just going to reiterate, there's more than one solution to this. So I believe it's with our old buildings, so mixed in new, but really trying to get some mixed-priced housing in the city, because somebody is going to want that $1,500 rent or payment. Somebody else is only going to be able to afford $600 a month rent or payment. So we've got a wide range that we have to keep looking at here, especially with the income levels that we'll look at with our city as well and people that are living here. So again, I'm going to cut it short, and thank you for coming and speaking tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Saginaw. Thank you to the speakers. When I heard that we're going to be talking about this topic, it was very exciting to myself. You know, we have a poverty problem here in the city. We have to figure out different ways that we can give folks affordable housing. There was one application from Melissa Gonzalez that was called Forever Home Saginaw, I think, and it was about buying dilapidated or ramshackled homes, putting money into them, and then moving them into a Section 8 type of rental. I don't know how plausible that is. I've been doing more research on HUD. They have a program called Home ARP, which allows for preservations, or allows for homeless, or at-risk people, or folks that have suffered domestic violence to be able to find housing. Those allocations went out, I believe, in March of 2021. So, yeah, we have a housing crisis in the city of Saginaw. I got a call earlier today from somebody that said, you know, "How can a landlord charge me $1,200 to stay in the neighborhood I'm staying in?" I said, "It's because they own the property." So, you know, we have to really, like Councilmember Ostash said, work together, all nine of us. We have a couple of good ideas. We had a couple of good applications for these funds, but I think one of the most important responsibilities that we have collectively is to find a way to make the city of Saginaw a livable city that they, people want to come to and stay in. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to save my comments for the discussion.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much, Mayor. I appreciate the young people that came up and spoke. I do have to say, I agree with you, even Kim, though you thought you was at the wrong meeting. I understand what you meant in regards to blight, on the other hand, so don't feel dismay. I definitely agree with Mr. Mixter, Mylan, and Mr. Eggleston. I've seen the house on 14th Street. I've seen the work that YDC has been doing. I've spoke with Mr. Mixter on several occasions, and I definitely agree with Mr. Mylan. We have to make Saginaw, make people want to come here. You know, we're going to do it a whole bunch of houses and nowhere, you know, nowhere for them to, you know, who's going to be in them, you know? We already have houses sitting, empty lots, empty buildings, empty houses, dilapidated houses, so hopefully us as council will come together with your input. I was hoping that these meetings would be a dialogue, but maybe in the future, you know, maybe that will, because I'm just, in my mind, I'm thinking more than four people probably wanted to engage with council. So hopefully, maybe that's something we can do in the future. But we have a lot of disenfranchised persons. We have a lot of homeless shelters that are full, and so this is going to be probably top, one of the top-list subjects in regards to the ARPA funding. And I do actually pray that I make correct decisions as it pertains to these dollars. Thank you so very much.
Oh, I'm done. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Next, we have Mayor Protem Balls.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to personally thank everybody for coming out, because your concerns are our concerns. You know, we're concerned about how the city look, how we are perceived, and the only way we're going to do that is to get some new housing in the city of Saginaw to attract some new people. Right now, you know, the problem is we need some tender, loving care in this city. And what I'm going to call tender, loving care is we need a tax lift on that cap. That cap, we got to get rid of that cap, because it's drowning our city. It's actually chokeholding us. We charging the residency more money for services, because we got to have, we got to pay for the salt that goes on the road, we got to pay for union workers getting raises, we got to pay for management getting raised. Everybody like to get a raise, and that because the cost of living keep going up. So the only way we're going to do that is probably get rid of that tax cap, so we can bring some new housing in the city of Saginaw. And then we, then that way, by bringing in new housing, that would even bring in a better tax, because the houses would be worth more money. If we got a lot of dilapidated homes around here that worth $20,000 or $30,000, there's only so much taxes we're going to get for that. But if we got homes in the city of Saginaw that cost $80,000, $90,000, $100,000, then we can charge more taxes and attract more people here. So with a better housing stock market, it will attract other people. We got schools here that should be turned into nursing homes and apartment buildings. My granddaughter graduated from college and went to Indiana when she graduated. She stayed in a school building that got refurnished. It had three different levels of income in that place. It was a beautiful apartment. Some had one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, three-bedroom houses. They had a beautiful courtyard from the school. They had a gymnasium. I went to another one this year in East Lansing, where they have a beautiful school that was, we got refurnished, and they rented out to, for weddings and things like that. They had a workout room there. It's a beautiful facility. We got, I don't know, five or six, seven school buildings around here in the city of Saginaw that just sitting dilapidating in people's neighborhood. Mr. Mixter talking about broken window syndrome. How you think those people feel? The schools they went to, they standing there looking at them buildings with broken windows that they went to. That's a shame. That's a shame on us. It's a shame on the school board, the county, and the city, and we need to do something about that. We need to lift that damn tax cap, because we getting choked in the city of Saginaw. And when I'm re-elected, that's going to be my main goal, to lifting that tax, so we can quit being strangled-horny by this small amount of money that we can collect for our citizens here. Everybody want to move out of the city, because they getting charged all these fees. We got to stop that and try to do something to make this place a better, attracted to people, invest money here in the city of Saginaw. Thank you.
What can I say? We are at a crucial point. Understand me when I say this. The whole goal of this entire council, and I hope they support me with this, is we need to increase the population as well. We are under 50,000. We are subject to lose money any minute, because we're not where we need to be. Housing, blight, you know, we've got a multitude of problems, okay? So I need everybody to understand. It didn't get this way overnight, but if we all work together, we can bring it back. I'm a firm believer. Ms. Kim, me and you can talk. I understand, and you are good. All of my public speakers, you all just gave some more flavor to the direction that we need to go. Now, now that you brought it to the table, let's not keep talking, okay? Let's put, get together, and let's say, we can work together. Collaboration is going to be the only thing that's going to move us forward, young people. None of us cannot, and I don't want to be responsible for all these decisions. I want to be, I'm going to be perfectly honest with y'all. There's a many sleepless nights that I have with this money that ain't even mine, and I'm sure others up here feel the same way. This meeting, I hope, will begin a beautiful relationship with the community, and everybody comes together and we start working together. Yes, we need to, we need to clean our city up. How long, how long do we know we need to clean our city up? It didn't happen, it didn't happen yesterday. Every time the snow lifts, once a year, I do a cleanup. People say, "You should do it more." No, you can do it. You don't need me. It's your neighborhood, so let us all start working together. That's all I got to say. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Madam Mayor, we don't have any presentations this evening, so this is a council-generated meeting for your discussion. I will tell you that we have talked to, well, we do talk to Treasury... to Treasury Department quarterly, and I think, um, from their statements, they, they believe that, um, Saginaw has been going about this the right way, studying, but I do think we need to start moving forward with our projects and start expending the funds because we do have a limited time period. So I think you're on the right track, and we have, uh, staff here. If there are any questions, we have our consultants from Guide House here. If there are questions about eligibility or if you have questions about, um, what some other, uh, local units across the country are doing, they have that experience. So, uh, with that, I'll, I'll turn it back over to you, Madam Mayor.
We're going to start with housing. Is that good or blight? Which one y'all want to start with? They are the same thing, but they not all the same thing. Because if I need a roof, my house, and I said, cut the trees down, cut the grass down. If I need a roof, I need a roof. I don't need my grass cut. I need a roof. So is that the council's pleasure?
Let's do both.
We doing both of them, but we got to figure out which one we.
Housing, housing. A lot of people have talked about housing.
That's what I think. All right. We're going to open this discussion up for housing. Please don't just sit here.
Excuse me, Mayor, housing is going, are you, is it dialogue with the, uh, citizens? Is it up here?
No, it's up here.
Okay.
It's up here with us.
Okay, I'll start. I, um, I can't say any particular, uh, programs because I'm still in the process of reading the four hundred plus, but, um, what I'm wondering, and, and I think I may have heard this, but what I'm wondering, uh, Mr. Eggleston and Mr. Mixter, um, is there a way to bring those components together in what you do? I know you work with youth, youth, Mr. Eggleston and Mr. Mixter, uh, you know, the, um, different homes and, uh, historic. Is there a way to maybe bring together? That's my thing. You don't have to, but I'm just wondering. Have you all maybe met? Do you know each other? Have you ever to, oh, okay. See, we almost there. And possibly coming together with the youth in the city of Saginaw, because I know there's plenty of youth at YDC. Is there a way that they, that can be engaged together? Am I, am I saying so? Okay, that's what I'm wondering. Can that, can his youth, is there some kind of way that you guys could come together? Am I going wrong? Am I not? Tell me.
The discussion should be amongst council.
Okay. Well, how do you all think? Is that something that we could possibly look at? You know, uh, we don't have to make a, uh, we can't make or force people to collaborate, but as I read through my different things, I can just see how so many people are, they could possibly collaborate. So there I have it with that.
Madam Mayor, I would just comment that related to that, council can direct staff to work with these organizations, and I think that might be something that you want to do, whether it fits into a, a program that, an application that was already in, or you like the organization and the program, but you want to see them combined. You can direct staff, um, to meet with those organizations and try to work through those issues so that, um, they can have a program or funding that, that does, um, what council intends it to do.
So, let me go back and do this right. No, let's finish the discussion. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, I don't want to speak on behalf of anyone that you were asking, but, um, I have been in meetings, um, with the individuals that you're talking about. There's definitely a huge opportunity for collaboration. I think there's a very large opportunity for collaboration with, um, other groups that extend beyond just the ones present tonight. Um, and that's why I personally would like to see us create a revolving fund using the ARPA dollars to address blighted commercial and residential properties. Um, if we take these dollars and create a revolving fund after the funds are spent, they become, become program dollars and they come back in, and that means that that deadline of twenty twenty-six is no longer there. And that means those dollars would be there, um, as long as we could continue to sustain them. Um, and as far as I know, this is one of the only ideas out there that does extend any of the money beyond the deadline that, that ARPA gives us. So, um, I'm prepared to make a motion on that because I'm, I'm ready, as Mr. Morales said, to get ready, to get moving on some of these shovel-ready products. We, we know snow is going to fly soon. Um, and if we, if we make some allocations, I think some smart allocations like that, um, we're, we're going to po- poise ourselves to get, to hit the ground running in the spring, first of all, but we might even see some improvement this, this fall before we hit the winter months. So, um, I, I like what you're saying, and I think you and I were thinking along the same lines because what you're saying sounds very much like what I've talked to Mr. Mixter about and various other groups. I will say that housing is my bucket that I was assigned, so, um, I'm not trying to, um, step on toes by having conversations, but it's my bucket. Um, so, um, but I, you know, but yeah, that's my idea, uh, and I agree.
Blight, because we talking about housing. Which one you talking about?
I'm talking about housing because most of the houses we got to put money into or we would be putting money into are blighted homes.
You said blight. That's why I'm asking. Well, you talked about blight as well. So I'm just, I just want to get a clarification.
Well, to, to me, the, the, they go hand in hand. I mean, a blighted lot may be an overgrown lot, but most of the properties we're talking about are bli- it's some sort of blight in the neighborhood, whether they're vacant, whatever. So I, I, I can remove the word blight, but to address commercial, I don't want to address, uh, you know, imply that we're trying to take care of brand-new buildings or anything like that, that we're.
Okay. Yes.
I would like the, uh, Guide House to let us know about the organizations that put in for housing and blight. And maybe we can start the conversation off like that, like find out which ones that want to do the work. You know, and see if we can put them together and make them do some, help them do some work in the city of Saginaw. Uh, with, as far as the lots is concerned and blight is concerned, a lot of these lots are sitting next to people's houses, and they haven't acquired those lots. Yeah, we know some of the houses that look pretty nice and they haven't got the lots yet. So maybe we need to, uh, be aggressive in going out asking the homeowners if they like to incorporate those lots with their homes. You know, in that way, we can make it all look better that way because the ones that we saw, seen so far, who have acquired those lots, they got some beautiful lots, and they're doing a good job of keeping them up. So, you know, there's some things that we could do as city council to be proactive about all this stuff and putting it together. So if, uh, I don't know if he's prepared to let us know anything about that now, or maybe we have to, uh, call another meeting to, uh, find out how many people put in for housing and how many put in for blighted, and see if we can get those to come together to, uh, tackle that problem and put some money in those buckets. Because we want money in your bucket system.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
The, the applications were sorted by housing and blight, provided to, to council, and I, I don't, I think there's probably too many for Guide House to go through, all of the applications, but if, David, if you want to make a few comments.
Can you come up to the mic, please, sir? Thank you.
One way that we could go about this is simply state that anyone who put a proposal in for housing or blight remediation is a preferred vendor or a preferred company. As we go through the process of using a revolving fund, um, or going through the, the official procurement process, that we identify those, those entities that did go through the proposal process, and we give them some sort of, um, elevated stature in that way. So that could be maybe a way that we kind of do birds one stone on that.
Do you have an update? And this will be for our manager as well, of any conversations that we, I think we talked about at our last meeting when we talked about housing and blight. Is there any updates from our county on a lot of the properties within the city? Is there any conversation that we've had where even if we do this, if that property is owned by the county, that's a county, that's a county relationship we will need? So is there any updates? Is there any promises? Any, anything that even if we have this conversation today, we can tell our community, hey, we've worked with the county, we are looking to create a program where these vacant lots next to homes, you know, we can start selling those now?
I will, uh, refer that to, uh, Councilmember Bench because I think she's been having her bucket discussions, and, and I know Councilman Ostas has been involved with that too. So do you want to respond to that?
So, yes, if that's okay. Um, so now the, um, now the land bank is free to sell properties within that green zone area that they've gone through all the applications. In that area, yes, in that area.
Lordy, right.
Okay. And, um, they are also doing the same thing with the applications that they have backlog for the side lots. Um, and I, we would need them, and we can certainly do it in partnership with them, but we really need them to do a robust push to reach out to everybody that they have sold a house to in the previous, you know, in the past, and then look at whether there's a vacant lot next to them. Because I've been through neighborhoods over on the east side, um, where you can see beautiful maintained homes next to an overgrown, you know, lot, and it's just a matter of they couldn't sell it at the time and now they can. And if they can get it into the hands of that responsible property owner, we're going to see a difference. But we need to be making sure that they, they pursue that.
Thank you. Let me say this right quick. When we talk about the land bank, we talk about them, because we've been working on this, trying to lift that name. I know I have for eleven and a half years. And now the staff can tell you, I wear them out with this. At the end of the day, the lots have always been available to you in the side of you, in front of you, and in back of you. If your neighbor wanted to buy, you could split the lot fifty-fifty. It went from three hundred to one fifty. So it's like, it's benef-, it's, it's been there, and I just don't know if the citizens know. Let's hope that they don't take it back up to the three hundred. You know, because three hundred for a lot was a bit much, I thought, but when I bought mines for a half a lot, I paid one fifty. But there's some contingencies on that that I think we need to work out too. That five-year can't build. What's the purpose of me buying a lot if I can't build on it? So that's something else we got to look at. So when we talk about it, the lots are here, and they've been here, and we, we didn't open it up citywide for a reason. And that was to give people that was next door to you or in that neighborhood where it was an abandoned house that had been tore down, you'd have an opportunity to purchase it. That's what it was really all about. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tim. So at the end of the day, maybe we need to go back and say, hey, y'all want to buy land, tell us how much it costs. We clean it up so that your house is beautiful with your pretty flowers. Look really, really pretty now. Now it don't look like flowers in the jungle.
Madam Mayor, and I will say the land bank, they, that's managed by the county treasurer, so we really don't have a say in what they do.
Right.
But we have been working with them, and I know that when they do look at those lot sales, um, they also look at, make sure that the person who's going to buy has their property taxes paid, that they keep their house up and so on, so that we know that that lot, if it's purchased or transferred, is going to be well-maintained as well. So I, I do know they have been doing that for, for years.
I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman Sylvie.
That part of what I had to say, but I want to, uh, ask, I have had several people that have come to me personally and said they were unable to purchase lots on either side of them. So I don't know what they were going through, but they were, uh, they've more than one, two, three, four, several people, uh, explained to me that they were unable to purchase those. And like, uh, City Manager Morales said, that's not us, that's the county. But I know that ha- has been a question for many, many years, uh, in regards to acquiring, um, lots next to them. And my other thought kind of went psh, south.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right.
I keep telling you, write it down. Write it down. Put it on paper. Um, to answer a little bit of your question, I'm sure that some of those people are in the area that we had as that area. I'm going to call it that area, which has now been lifted. It's no longer that area. So my understanding now is that they will be able to purchase. Now, there was times that the only people that could purchase was businesses, like the churches and, and those types of things that was in that area or business. But I think now that's been changed. I'm praying that it's changed. Okay? Yes, sir?
Come on, Mr. Flores.
Oh, yeah. When I was talking about the hu- uh, housing crisis and the rent crisis, you know, COVID really put, um, a strain on a lot of folks, especially younger people. I think it was Pew Research came up with fifty-two to forty-seven percent of younger people moved in with their relatives or families during COVID. Uh, a percentage of those are still there. Uh, I agree with Councilwoman Bench, yet what I'd like to see additionally, there was a, um, application from Jacque Quest Anderson about, it was called A1 Renovations, having homeowners that are in the city of Saginaw that are able to have a multi-generational, you know, uh, passing on of their house to their younger, um, relatives, keeping them in the city, to be able to renovate those homes. Uh, look at some of the applications that came through because it's more than just Jacque Quest. It was, you know, I think six or seven that I counted, where it's folks that want to look at renovating homes, uh, making them, you know, more sturdy, more durable, and more livable, that they can kind of continue that multi-generational wealth. I think that that, uh, along with the section eight expansion would be the priority that I'd like to see for the city.
Just real quick, um, going on with what Annie was talking about, and then kind of what you mentioned too, because I one hundred percent support you in trying to get people moved back into the city to try to get our population numbers up. Um, Councilwoman Bench, I think that program that you're mentioning about not only is commercial but residential, but would be a way to get people back into homes and living in the city, and also with some other renovation that could also, uh, like I spoke about earlier, some price points that they can afford, and some other programs, uh, looking at down the road that could actually be assistable to this whole program. So I, I can support that.
Mr. Copeland, I would like to direct this question to city, our city manager and city staff to possibly, there's two areas that I have an, uh, questions about, that our banking and credit unions, the relationships that we have that could possibly, if there are any low-income new programs. I've recently heard about some, um, business loans for di- multi, um, diverse business owners. Is there anything like that with our local support, our local credit unions, our local banks that, that's available for, um, residents? And then also with our housing commission, we've heard, we've talked a lot about the housing commission, like section eight, I know we can't do anything about that, but I know they have programs where people who qualify, there is a home buying program. Is there a way that we could, from the city, share that information? So if there is any opportunities for residents in the city of Saginaw that, that they, it's on their page, but we can somehow put it on our page to just share some information?
If it's from a nonprofit or the housing commission, we could probably share links to their pages. Um, banking, there are a lot of new products for, for housing loans, but I don't think we can necessarily promote that because they're, they're private businesses. But there are, uh, people can, um, contact any of the, the banks or credit unions in the city, and most of them do have programs for, for home lending that are some new, uh, say some new, um, products, lines, and new, um, down payments that they do have. I know that, I know a lot of them have put, uh, money into those programs.
You, you shaking your head. Yes.
I'd like to address what Mr. Copeland said. Um, there is, they do have grants and home loans at credit unions. By me being on the board of the rest of Moni Gas, you know we just merged with Financial Plus, and now we have one point two billion dollar credit union. And there were some programs where we take, uh, federal home loan dollars and get them to the citizens in the city of Saginaw and give them seventy-five hundred to, uh, ten thousand dollars to fix up your homes with. So maybe we can get together and see how those, uh, you work with the housing commission, but we can see if we can get that program going back again.
You know, you also have banks.
Banks are doing it as well right now. They've got Christmas in July where families can actually go in and elderly can go in or disabled. They can actually go in and see, do you have a program for home repairs? Um, Huntington has one, Isabella Bank has one, Frank and Move Credit Union has one. I mean, we've had people come in and present to council. Maybe that may be a direction we might want to go. Ask them to come in and see if the city manager would give them time, slots in his space so that the community can know what's going on. Yes.
Another thing to add on to that too, Councilman Copeland, is that the, uh, through Mishta, just like any financial institution, um, different programs will come out of there too, but you've got to get on the phone, call them, maybe get on their email list to see what's available because they're all, I know my niece. Because they're all, I know my niece has taken advantage of it recently from a bank. Yeah, first-time home buyer, so.
Any more discussion?
Well, I know that we, the recommendations from the committee that we had working with us said that we would, they recommend that we put $4 million in that bucket. And I'm wondering, how much did we want to take out of that for blight? Because we don't have anything in here for blight. But I think that maybe we should incorporate that with blight. And I'm willing to make a motion that we put the $4 million into housing revitalization and blight. And then we figure out, we can work with the city staff to see how we want to put that money in a bucket to see how we're going to get it out to our citizens. So I'm making a motion right now to put $4 million in that bucket so we can get this work done.
There's a motion on the floor for $4 million to go into the bucket for blight elimination along with housing. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
It's been seconded for discussion. Open the floors up for discussion.
Is that a proper motion at the time? No, I'm trying to, I'm just thinking that.
I don't think we have to allocate a certain amount of money in a bucket. So I'm not sure if that's a proper motion. So I guess I'm asking for clarification.
Motion to set aside $4 million into a bucket to later be determined how to spend it.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know. I would like to get clarification also because I thought this was just a meeting to discuss back and forth, not that any motions or any decisions would be made in this single-subject meeting. So I'm going to look over here. Because I didn't think any motions or anything like that. This was just discussion because there will be more discussions after that. I didn't think we were making motions.
It's whatever council's pleasure is. If council's ready to make motions, then.
Let me say this. One of the things Councilwoman Sylvia was that we didn't have a closed session because closed session was if we wanted to move forward, we could make a motion. So we did a special meeting, a single-subject special meeting. And that's so that we can move forward. If we put a dollar figure on something as a whole, it's not determined because my understanding is that we would refer it back to the staff. The staff would give us some more data information. We could then grow from there. And y'all correct me if I'm wrong.
What I'm saying, okay, I understand Councilman Ball's motion.
Right.
But I guess I'm kind of a Councilman Scherzer, too, at this particular time. Is it time to distinguish buckets and dollar amounts? That's, and we never even talked about blight. We only talked about housing. You know, we didn't even get to blight.
Well, housing and blight, the way y'all keep saying that they wanting the same, except for my grass don't need to be cut on my roof. So it's almost the same. When we talk about, y'all couldn't.
Would you distinguish housing and we couldn't talk about blight yet? So I was adhering to the rules of the Madam Mayor.
No problem. And the rule stated that he said both of them. He combined them both together. He went away from housing and he combined the blight and the housing together to save $4 million to go into that bucket. Now, Councilman Flores. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You done?
Yes, I'm fine. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I doubt that we are less than 50,000. How much are we looking at about not receiving from the federal government for blight elimination? Do we know?
Well, we don't necessarily receive HUD money for blight elimination. So most of our blight elimination programs that we've done in the past have been working with the land bank and they have been specific grants. Neighborhood Stabilization Program 1 and 2. And then there have been some other grants like that. Those are primarily focused on dangerous or blighted housing demolition. Then in our general fund, we have a dangerous building demolition allocation. And I think, do we have part of our CDBG for dangerous building, too? That's what, that's all this, as a city, that we do with blight elimination. Other than our SCENIC program, that's all general fund and that's code enforcement.
That's what I was referring to, is the CDBG funds. So there would, originally, there was money for blight or through what you're discussing now, right?
Not within CDBG. CDBG does focus on, there's a focus on housing. There's home programs and homelessness prevention in block grant, but not necessarily blight elimination.
Okay.
But we do have, so Mayor has referred to it and others, the threshold of 50,000 people, that makes you an entitlement city for block grant if you have qualified census tracts, which we have, we have a few. If you fall under 50,000, I believe you become an applicant city. Is that right, Yolanda?
You have the potential to be an applicant. Right now, we're currently grandfathered as in time with the.
Until HUD says otherwise.
And we stay at his grandfather. At his grandfather's threshold, so they don't take any money from us.
I'm done. Almost done. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Were you done, Mr. Flores?
Yep.
Councilman Flores, I'm sorry.
No.
Councilman Ossash.
Yeah, this is just kind of, to go along with what Councilman Flores is talking about. Now, look to Yolanda, because we're always in the meetings, but it's roughly around 350,000 for boardups and blight, I think was the last CB allocated. It was somewhere around there.
It's somewhere in that area.
It's ranged anywhere from like 350 to 500.
Just depends on like what allocation we get during the course of the year.
So that kind of helps you, like a dollar amount.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Copeland.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay. Comes up real good. This is what I forgot. Now, anyway, in regards to, should there possibly be, and I guess this will come over here, a collaborative effort between the city and the county in regards to dollars in housing and blight? So maybe we should see, I guess, whomever your staff would, or yourself, in regards to the county, how many dollars we can bring together to tackle this problem. And maybe then we would allocate particular dollars after we've come together and see if the county would collaborate with the city in doing something in regards to housing and blight. That would be, you know, that's just my thought.
Yeah, I think that the county has allocated quite a bit of their funding already. And, you know, David and Guy House are working with them, but I don't know if they have those numbers yet. The county has not contacted me to work on blight, housing and blight. So I don't think we have that information right now.
But is that something? Okay.
I got to find it. It's going to be.
Okay, but is that something doable? That you can see that you can get with them and?
I can send the county controller an email about housing and blight. They're looking for some things to collaborate, but I believe right now they're focused on some parks and other areas.
Thank you.
We ought to be adding collaboration. Well, we have a collaboration going on with that stage at Old Jipway. It's going to cost us $193,000. They're willing to give $100,000 if we give $100,000. That was going to be the start of a relationship so that at least we can say we worked together on this venture. Okay? I don't know if that clears up. It's different with blight. I didn't talk about that.
Yeah, but that's good to know that part, but I'm talking about blight and housing. But that's good to know, too. Thank you.
Yes. Which one was first?
Hey, I know the citizens come here today to find out if we're going to be spending this money. The county have allocated money to different things. We allocated money to the fairgrounds when I wasn't here a couple of weeks ago. Thank God, I'm glad we done that. But I'm telling you guys, we need to, it's getting to the season where it's going to start getting cold. And we need to get this done so people can get out there and start doing some work. We keep sitting on this and ain't going to do nothing. I mean, we put the committee together, we asked them for suggestions. Let's take some of these suggestions and get busy. I mean, we can put this money with the city and let them allocate it with our blessing to how we want this to go for housing and for blight. I mean, that's going to put the money in a bucket. Don't mean there's somebody that's going to give it all away with no stipulations. But we got to do something. And I think the time to act is now. So it's up to us.
I'm so glad somebody's been listening to me. Yes.
All right. I'm personally going to vote no on this motion simply because $4 million to address housing and blight and blight is not enough. Number one, in my opinion. Number two, allocating $4 million to this bucket arbitrarily doesn't give our staff any direction necessarily to actually hit the ground running and get these projects done. We're just assigning a dollar figure to a bucket. We already know that this bucket is a priority. I appreciate the work of the committee, but $4 million for housing may be adequate for just housing alone, but certainly not blight. Not when I've spent the last two weeks knocking the neighborhoods over in the northeast neighborhoods and seeing the numbered streets and all the dumping spots and hearing like how we cleaned up Boxwood during Mayor Morris cleanup and to see that it's even in worse condition now because we don't have anybody on staff to go deal with it. So to lump all of that in there indiscriminately without any kind of clarification, especially when I've been working on this as my bucket for a while now and I've put a tremendous amount of thought into it and gotten buy-in from folks. I got to talk to community leaders, talk to community groups that would be in these, that meetings that we'd be hoping to have because I kind of thought that's what we as council members were supposed to be doing with our own little focused area. So I'll be voting no on this because I don't think it's adequate. I really don't. And that's just my opinion. There's too much else. We've got homeowner-occupied homes that are excluded in this bucket by that. And I, you know, these are all people we need to focus on under this bucket.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to call for the vote.
Calling for the vote.
I'll second that.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Wait, can you please read the motion again? Oh, that's right. We're voting on call for the vote first. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes, have it. Madam Clerk, can you please read the motion again?
It's to allocate $4 million for housing and blight elimination, working with city staff on identifying where to expend the funds.
We're calling for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Do we need a roll call vote? We need a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
No.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Councilmember Bench.
No.
Mayor Potem Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer?
No.
Councilmember Ossash?
No.
Councilmember Flores?
No.
Councilmember Copeland?
No.
And Mayor Moore?
No.
You have one yes and seven no.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Bench.
I would like to make a motion to allocate $5 million from ARPA funds for a revolving fund to address commercial and residential structures and further authorize the staff to create and establish the criteria for these funds to be spent.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion?
Yeah, that's fine with me. The more the merrier.
Yes.
Please read, read the motion.
A motion to allocate $5 million from ARPA funds for a revolving fund to address commercial and residential structures and to further authorize the city staff to create and establish the criteria for these funds to be spent.
Can I ask a question? No, no.
Are we up for questioning?
Okay. My question would be, I believe I'm hearing it correctly. It would include what Mayor Potem Balls said, blight housing, but you also saying existing houses?
I'm strictly talking about existing, or existing stock of buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Did we ask some questions? I had thought I seen some hands down here.
So.
Yes.
So you mean, so the motion is to, you just want to improve the existing stock, but don't build no new houses?
I think that.
And so you asked a no question, actually?
Yes, it's a, yes. That's what I'm strictly speaking about. But to add clarification, if I may, that doesn't mean that we can't make a motion around new housing. I am strictly trying to focus on the existing housing stock, which is what we've heard from the public here tonight. Like the existing structures that we have.
Yes.
To comment on the motion that Annie, Councilwoman Bench, has made, I like this idea because this creates sustainability into the system. Money, money goes out to fix up a home. Sounds like the home or the residential, commercial or residential. And so money comes back and it's, and it continues, perpetual funds going in and going out that can actually help neighborhoods in downtown. I'm thinking Janus T. Corridor, just off the top of my head.
I think we probably have a majority focus on residential because with the market being the way it is, we're going to see a return on what we put into those residential houses far more than we might a commercial building. But that would be inclusive of commercial buildings. But we also know that a commercial building might need $200,000 or $300,000 worth of work and we're probably not going to be able to sell it for that amount. But the idea is to give some longevity to that $5 million and extend the life of those dollars in an impactful way beyond that 2026 deadline.
I got a question. Mr. David, is this feasible? Can we do this?
Yes, absolutely.
So what you're going to need to focus on, to be specific, is abandoned or vacant spaces that would fit under blight as a description to be very specific on what we say when we say blight. Blight would be an abandoned or vacant space that cannot be inhabited. And those spaces, whether that's commercial or residential, as long as they are within a qualified census tract or a community that has a plan for revitalization itself due to being disproportionately impacted, you could run a revolving fund that focuses on those structures, revitalizes them and put them back on the market. It's been done in many other places. We've got models for this. This is well-tread space.
Okay. I think before we go to talking, we need to ask Tim, is it in the qualified census tract? Because we can make all of these plans and we can't do it. So I needed to ask that question. Yes, Councilman Mayor Potem Balls.
So who would do this work? I mean, we're going to pick a contractor to go and fix these houses up? I mean, how are we going to do it?
You would, generally speaking.
You could develop the program in any way you want. But as we spoke about, you know, preferred contractors, but you would go out to bid for every job that you were going to do. You could bundle those, you could do them one-off. But there would be a process where you'd go out to bid and then you would, you would go through a normal procurement process from that standpoint.
So we said that she didn't want to throw blighted in there. Yeah, we're going to buy a blighted property. What's the difference? They're cleaning up blight and fixing up blight.
It, same end result, I guess. The only difference would be if you were talking specifically about remediating blight, one of the options would be demolition.
Right.
This would not include demolition as a result of the revolving fund. The revolving fund in this case, based on what was said, would be limited to revitalizing the property for use.
I like that.
Yes.
Is that eliminating building new structures?
No.
Okay. I'm good. Okay, thank you.
Any questions on this end? Yes.
Do we know how many folks had applied and labeled their housing under the portal? How many folks total?
Restate the question, please.
So in that Excel sheet that we got, do we know how many people total had applied for the housing column for?
Like in terms of their proposal was we grouped as housing?
Yeah.
Forty to 50 proposals within housing.
And the total amount that they collectively asked for?
Oh, I don't have that. We can get it for you.
Okay.
All right.
That'd be great.
All right. It's a large amount. I can do it.
Is it $5 million? That'd be helpful. And then also, I'm sorry, I had one more question for our lawyer. Would we legally, legally be able to do this now because it's a special meeting? Or would we have to defer it to a regular meeting because it's a transactional issue?
A motion?
According to Roberts.
You can make motions at special meetings. They're treated in the same manner as a regular meeting for purposes of parliamentary procedure. You're thinking of a committee of the whole where motions do not occur. There's a difference between a committee of the whole and a special meeting. This is a special meeting.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
So, and I want to clarify something too, based on something that Councilwoman Flores that you just brought up. It's not one big lump of money going out, it's money to fix structures, then the money comes back into, and then we do another project, and the money comes back. So we're not, we're not gonna run out of money. It, it's, and, and working with our staff and Tim and, and, you know, the manager can work with staff to get this program up and running for us, administer it. Like Guy House was just saying, then we can look at each project. It's not like we're gonna be doing fifty projects, there might be two to start, so.
Allocate all the funds by 2026, even if you know the money's coming back?
We know.
Just to be clear. So you have to do all the projects before 2026?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to call for the vote. I'll support that.
It's been supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, can you read the vote? Can you read the motion again, please?
It's to allocate five million dollars of ARPA funds for a revolving fund to address commercial and residential structures and further authorize city staff to create and establish the criteria for these funds to be spent.
Everybody's heard the motion? We're going into voting now. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostash.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia.
Yes.
And Councilmember Williams is absent. Your motion is carried.
Yes, she ain't even asked me, but Mayor Moore, yes. Mayor Moore, yes. Okay, yes. Councilwoman, Mr. Sergio.
So in regards to housing and revitalization, during the pandemic, our families across the board, our citizens, struggled. It didn't matter what side of town you lived on, it didn't matter what your family makeup was, it didn't matter how old you were, it didn't matter about anything. So families had to strategize and make ends meet. So I think it is well overdue, even though we have had programs, but to have a rehab program for our citizens. So I would like to make a motion, I move to allocate three point eight million dollars from the ARPA funds to improve our residential properties on owner occupied dwellings, which will also include roofing, furnaces and windows, and further authorize our city staff to create and establish the criteria for these funds.
I'll second that.
Up for discussion? Yes.
From my, from my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, the motion that was just made and passed would include that? It does not?
Does not. Make it blighted, the previous is make it blighted, this is for owner occupied. So somebody living in their house.
That's a grant or a loan?
No, grant. Grant, no payback.
Okay, I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, now that, this may be a little off, I don't know. But I'm thinking that we would come together as a council and decide the amount together collectively on which bucket get which amount of money. And now we're study voting on X amount of dollars in a meeting that most of the citizens didn't know we was getting ready to do this. So I, I just think, to me, it seems out of order to be putting money in these buckets at this particular time and not coming together collectively with the people that we serve and have conversation on these buckets. I, I, I just think it's, I think we, I think I don't wanna be a part of something that is not done correctly. So there, there, there that is.
Madam attorney, I, I think that what we're doing is in alignment with what we needed to do, and that does not mean that we can't go back. And if you wanna add some more, if we got some more left over, put it just like CBDG. If some extra money come in, then we put it over in that pot. And the whole idea is to make Saginaw better. That, that's the whole idea. It, it's not to take away from anybody's program, not to take away from anything, but it is to begin to move us into a direction where we can be. Like your group that you work on is activity in youth. We're waiting. Tell us. You tell us how, how we need to, how we need to proceed, so. Attorney, are we going right? Are we doing this right?
Well, I, I mean, in terms of how the special meeting was called and posted.
Yes.
Absolutely, you did it in accordance with the open meetings statute.
Okay. So.
Just a quick comment for Councilwoman Lamar Sylvia. One person that comes to mind is Audubie, she's been here how many times, talking about seniors and, and, and. So when I think about this motion, I think about our seniors that need help with their homes that are on fixed incomes and retired. So, thank you.
Yes.
For the city staff, do we know the total amount of homeowners in the city of Saginaw?
I think there's about eighteen thousand residential properties.
Okay, and then how many of those are at or below the poverty level?
I don't think.
Twenty-six percent.
Twenty-six percent?
For council, this application that was submitted that is for this is similar to a program that we already have. We have a home assistance program, but it is not available citywide. So we have, even with, it's only available to the HUD EG block grant census tracts right now. And even with just that area, we have probably over fifty applicants that are on a waitlist or have been turned down because of, we allocate all the funds that we have. So if you open that up citywide, which I believe is the intent here, because as long as you are below a certain income, it shouldn't matter where you live if you can't put a roof or furnace or windows on your house. I think it's gonna be a pretty significant number of, of households that would qualify.
So do we know if this amount would be enough?
I don't know if it's, I mean, you, it depends, I mean, you're looking at a lot of different buckets here, so you, that's a decision council would make. If it, if it comes back and we can provide you information as it's going along, you could allocate more. Another thing to keep in mind, and I think Mayor Potem has mentioned this before, is that in a program like this, if you're looking at roofs, furnaces, you know, the structural things to homes, right now, there are a limited number of contractors, and there are supply chain issues. So you're gonna hit up against that timeframe of when these funds have to be expended too. So people would need to probably get started as soon as possible with this application process. So you may be, even if you could spend more, you may not be able to spend more anyway just because of those issues.
And this would qualify everybody that's a homeowner, even if they make like, you know, two hundred thousand dollars a year?
Well, I think what, when we bring it back to council, I think you'd have to have income limitations. I'd defer that back to Councilwoman Sergio, but I think that's the intent to have, still have the income limitations, but open it citywide.
Well, I would just like to see that in writing, that we have qualifications or disqualifications or targeted groups or, that's what I would like to see.
I think that would come back as part of the motion, is that the staff would set the criteria and then of course bring it back to council.
Great.
The way the motion is worded, it would be for staff to establish that criteria administratively and not necessarily for it to come back to council for approval.
That's what I would like to see.
I think the whole council gotta remember that this money is not gonna save the city all in, in two or three years, we gotta realize that. There's gonna be other funds coming into the city, you know, we gotta realize that. So don't think that this money right here is gonna save the city in one white, that ain't gonna happen. But the thing is, we are improving some of the citizens' homes. I'm willing to support that motion because we do have a lot of citizens that need their homes fixed up, the city manager just told us about how many people that applied for the loans and didn't get them because we don't have any. So let's, I'd like to move on this motion so we can keep this going and we get to other buckets later.
Okay, well, I like the record to reflect the comments by the city attorney in regards to us making these motions, other than that, I'm fine.
Call for the question.
Support.
Call for the vote has been supported. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk, can you read that motion again, please?
A motion to allocate three point eight million dollars of ARPA funds to improve residential properties on owner occupied dwellings through the improvements of roofing, furnaces and windows, and further authorize city staff to create and establish the criteria for these funds to be spent.
She's shaking her head, so.
It is occupied dwellings, which would include improvements of roofing, furnaces and windows.
Would you like me to restate it?
Please.
Yes, please.
Motion to allocate three point eight million dollars of ARPA funds to improve residential properties on owner occupied dwelling, which would include improvements of roofing, furnaces and windows, and further authorize city staff to create and establish the criteria for these funds to be spent.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Potem Balls.
Yes.
Councilmember Scherzer.
Yes.
Councilmember Ostash.
Yes.
Councilmember Flores.
Nay.
Councilmember Copeland.
Yes.
Councilmember Lamar Sylvia. I'm sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams is absent. Councilmember Bench.
Yes.
And Mayor Moore.
Yes. Yes.
Your motion carries.
Yes.
I know we haven't talked about blight, but I know one of my buckets, I really, if possible, to make a motion because. Okay, well, I, I wanna.
Five million housing with three point five.
I wanna touch on blight a little bit because we still have, one of the things that was brought up was about our food desert and food insecurity. And I know I've been in some meetings where certain information.
We not talking about the food desert.
But it's a blight, so, but I, so, so, because I wanna use blighted properties in this conversation. So the motion would be to allocate two million of ARPA funds to address Saginaw's food insecurity and food desert challenges via the rehabilitation of existing city-owned vacant or blighted structure, and to further direct the city administration to seek a feasibility study for a co-op as the first step.
It's been moved to second, any discussion? Excuse me.
So the motion is existing city-owned property, would you entertain the acquisition of a property? So, I mean, we don't own a lot of, as the city, we don't own a lot of vacant properties right now that would fit into that category.
I would entertain that, especially if our feasibility study shows that where we need this, there is nothing there. Would you amend?
Yes.
May, maybe it would be appropriate to amend your motion instead of city-owned to be publicly owned? That way, maybe we could ask nicely and the land bank would give us something.
Right. If they got so.
I'm not, I'm not gonna mess with the motion, but maybe it could be fixed where the city acquires. Because if they don't already have it, they also can acquire. You know, like I heard someone say today they had something forty something lots that could possibly, some of those be acquired from, you know, to the city, so.
I just need someone to amend that.
Excuse me. I'd like to, I like your motion, but the city may not be responsible for doing all this, and there are other investments. I mean, other investors would like to come in the city and help us out with the food desert. So if we do anything, maybe we just put the money in a bucket to do that with, and then as we get more people to help us out or bring us some proposals to help with that desert thing, because it'd be hard to do a grocery store. And I think that the food co-op would be a better thing to do, and I know some people wanna do a co-op here in the city, so maybe we can invest with them.
And that's why with the motion, I put that co-op in there, just because I know what that would, that's a lot of work for the city. And I didn't wanna remove an opportunity, so I just wanted to set some dollars aside so we can just begin to look and get at least a feasibility study.
So why don't we just do two million for the food co-op? And not say city property, okay, we see you don't have no property for that.
It's gotta be blight.
It gets a little tricky when you start spending money for a new business. And so, you know, I do say focus on the capital structure and allow the city to own that structure, and then allow the city to fill that with a tenant that might provide food for a food desert.
I would make a motion to amend the original motion to strike the word city-owned and replace that with publicly-owned.
Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Oh, I'm sorry, now we have to go on the original motion. The original motion was. Yes, please.
Motion to allocate two million dollars of ARPA funds to address Saginaw's food insecurity and food desert challenges via the rehabilitation of existing publicly-owned vacant or blighted structures and to further direct the city administration to seek a feasibility study for a co-op as the first step.
Everybody heard the motion?
No.
All right, let's call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Is that your pleasure?
Pardon me?
Is that your pleasure? That passed.
What? Yes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, just one more topic of discussion that I've, we've been talking about tonight too. We've, we've talked about, we've done city cleanups, and the next thing you know, the properties are full again, and there even more stuff is being dumped into the neighborhood. I've been knocking on a lot of doors on the southeast side of Saginaw, and it's the same situation over there from the residents, and everybody's complaining about it. So I would like to make a motion to allocate eight hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funds for environmental investigation cleanup and blight remediation and all needed equipment through twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-six.
It's open for discussion now. I thought we just took five million and put into blight. And so in that five million, that eight hundred can come out of there for the, for the evaluation. I, I need some clarification because I think we're, we're crossing over. We're crossing over. So we, we need to be strong and steady. If we say five million that we're gonna put on blight, what are you talking about?
Five million for the blight that we set aside is for the revolving fund to repair vacant homes and vacant structures. The eight hundred thousand that he's talking about would fund the position that, at the city, that went out and actually cleaned up all these dumping sites. We had a person in the position before, but the position went away, and this was the first summer after several consecutive summers where we did not have this position in place. And you could see the difference, I have spent so much time on the phone, driving over, picking things up. Like I mentioned, all the houses over on Sears, you know, all the numbered streets over on Norman, it's all dumped on, and we don't have anybody. I'm sending them to Darren Jerome, knowing he's retiring, you know, next week, just to kind of document these addresses because there's no one here at the city to go and clean them up.
I got a question. So are you saying that you wanna use the eight hundred thousand dollars for a position to have somebody go and make sure we get this work done? Because if that's the case, I mean, the city, we gave. Because if that's the case, I mean, the city, we gave city half of its money already. Let the city buy that. Instead, let's put an 800,000 in there. I mean, the city got money. They, they have had people that done that job. Let's let them find somebody to get the job done again. Instead, let's throw an 800,000 in there. We got a lot of different projects to do. And the city got the money. I mean, they got 23 million like we got it. So they got half of that money. So let them take care of that part. We don't, we can't do it all.
It's not an allowable use under the ARPA spending, under the lost revenue, though.
Well, they still got to put the position up anyway. They still got to put the position up.
Could we defer to the manager and staff? Because I know that they've provided many of us on council information about the importance of this, you know, position and exactly what the position would entail, the equipment, the, I mean, it's, it's everything for four years.
Okay, I'll take this one. So basically, what we're attempting to do, the whole concept is environmental cleanup, prevention, and then investigation. So at one point in time, we had an, a police officer who was working on looking at the different dumping sites throughout the community. We were able to identify areas where there was significant dumping and the individuals that were dumping there. What this $800,000 does is basically only maybe 20% of it or less is going to be for the individuals to continue their work, not only with city staff, but also with the county land, land conservancy, to make sure that we identify different locations, but also the purchase of equipment. So instead of, we have the, the convenience station on Saturdays, but having like a roll-off truck in different locations where you see like heavy dumping, cleaning up the different spots with our environmental improvement employees, which we've only have two individuals doing that right now. So this all opens up the fact of cleaning up the city, beautifying it, because now you're going to identify the individuals that are dumping and having someone like focus the environmental improvement.
I appreciate that. I mean, it's, you know, just throwing the money in, I don't know where we'll be putting it. I appreciate what you say, because a lot of citizens are complaining about them dumping all the time, like over on Boxwood. You know, it's like, people think it's a regular place to dump it. They go in and dump all the time. So I, I, I concur with that. I agree with that.
This is a proposal that was submitted. If you look at your packet, this proposal was submitted, and the position that went away, as soon as it, it was gone, I did start receiving calls saying, where did this person go? Because they're the ones that facilitated our cleanups, helped with the investigation of the dumping and so on. So it has been something that's been a focus probably for the last year or so.
Call for a question. Call for a vote.
Call for the vote?
So George has got his hand up.
Talked about one position. With $800,000, would it be possible to get two?
What they said.
Well, I think that, I mean, you said, but we also have a whole division that's dedicated. There's two additional individuals that's dedicated towards environmental improvement. You just have like that focus of someone who can really focus on doing the investigation itself.
And cleaning it up.
And cleaning up. So you're going to, you have a, basically a three-member team working on this.
Y'all heard that, citizens? And clean it up. No.
All right, I, I mean, we, we can't be doing it, y'all. Come on, let's don't be talking.
The other thing to point out is that the purchase of the equipment is essential because right now, we're sharing, the vehicle or the truck that's being shared is being shared with streets. So the equipment that you're purchasing will be allocated directly towards environmental cleanup.
I'm good with that.
Yes.
Would this be sustainable past 2026?
I believe that it would be. I mean, our whole, our whole thing is to build our stronger community, making our, our community nice. Well, people are going to come to a place that's clean.
Right.
They're going to want to live in clean neighborhoods. So if, there's a desire there. I think that you're going to see it sustained past 2026.
So the equipment, it's my understanding it would be the expanded law enforcement or city staff that would have an extra car?
No, this is more than just a, a car. We're talking like a roll-off truck where people, you can take the truck to the location. People can throw the trash in the truck, it's the, the bin itself, and then they remove it, bring it back over to the city for dumping.
Would some of the resources be additional trash cans? Because I know that folks sometimes flitter because there's not a abundance of trash cans in parks.
How about, are they going to have a, a little small bulldozer to come and pick stuff up too? I'm serious speaking.
It's $800,000. We can pretty much get what we need to make sure it gets done.
Let's get it done then.
We can, you can, the capital equipment is a good use.
But I will also note that Elonda mentioned the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy. So we do contract with them. Our, they do, they get donations from other sources to do cleanups, and they do have small Bobcats and other equipment, too. So if we keep working with them, you know, we can help leverage this, this position here and some of our other equipment to help them out. But they do have a lot of the brush hogs and other, other equipment.
Need to call for the vote.
I'll second that.
Hotel. It's been moved as second. The call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Madam Clerk, can you read the motion again, please?
The motion is to allocate $800,000 of ARPA funds for environmental investigation cleanup and blight remediation and all needed equipment through 1231, 2026.
Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Madam Clerk?
Is that your pleasure, ma'am?
Motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn? Well, not adjourn, a motion to move into the next scheduled meeting. Okay, a motion to adjourn. It's been moved as second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?